This week's podcast is a little bit different. There is no guest. You're stuck with thirty minutes of me talking about my background, where I'm from, my story, how I got to where I am now. So if you've managed to make it through forty-five episodes, listening to me, talk to other people, I'd appreciate if you give this one a shot. You'll learn a little bit more about me. This is the Randy Force Your Podcast. You do me a favor, follow on Spotify, Apple or YouTube. We're also on social media on Facebook, Instagram. If you give it a like, that would be great. Appreciate the support. Thanks for listening. Here we go. So this is something totally outside of my comfort zone, something I couldn't have imagined doing a few years back, but since starting the podcast, I figure why not? So why don't we jump right in? I grew up in Bedford, Maine. Most people knew that. Grew up to a very loving, supportive family. My parents did split up when I was six years old, but they still stayed close and had a great childhood. Have two younger brothers and a stepsister who I don't see as often as I would like, but I'm very proud of all their success. They're all doing really well. So very close family wise, extended families, all close by grandparents, all that stuff. So it's a pretty good situation. So like I said, great childhood, grew up in Bedford, went to Bedford High School, graduated. At that point, it was time for me to go to college and no clue what I wanted to do at that point, but I did play sports growing up, decided that I want to play football in college and one of the colleges that I had an opportunity to do that was at St. Anson College in Manchester, New Hampshire. So graduated high school, said, hey, I'll play football in college, see what that whole thing is like. And freshman year, went in the summertime, started training camp, all that fun stuff. And it was, it was great. You know, it's fun playing football in college. It was obviously better competition. Everyone on the team was really, really good from wherever they were from, but made some great friendships, friendships that are still a big part of my life now. Some of the best friends I have are people that I met that first summer going into college, starting football training camp. So no regrets there. Did turn into more of a job than anything, you know, just like what people say about college sports. So that combined with some injuries that I had, I decided to move on from playing football. I actually thought that after freshman year, I was going to transfer to Northeastern and whatever happened, it didn't work out. And I ended up coming back to St. A as my sophomore year. And then finish it out. It was a great college experience, all things considered. Wasn't like USC or Arizona State, but for a two thousand person school, about an hour and fifteen minutes from home. It was a great experience with a lot of great people that I'm still in touch with today. So it was my senior year where one of the bigger events in my life took place. It was in March of that senior year, had a few months to go before graduating. We went to Negril Jamaica for vacation for spring break. And it was a great week, crazy week, just like you'd expect for any spring break back when you're twenty-one, twenty-two years old, ton of fun. Came back very tired on a Saturday afternoon, flew back in and decided to go home to Bedford to do some laundry. Rest up for going back to school that Sunday night and finishing up the last few months of school. So did all that. And decided around eight o'clock that I was going to hit the road and head back to college. And as I was driving south on ninety-five in Southern Maine, I was actually involved in a really serious car accident. Gentleman from Canada, I think he was seventy-eight years old, was actually traveling northbound in the southbound lane and hit me head on. And looking back at my life, this is probably one of those moments that changed everything for me. It's almost like life before the accident, life after the accident. And actually I have no regrets about it, how it all turned out, but it was one of those big moments in my life. There's no doubt about that. Anyone that knows ninety-five south in Southern Maine, there's a part around mile ten, eleven, twelve, it's a little twisty, turny nighttime. You know, you're not really paying attention or thinking that someone might be traveling north on the southbound of the highway. And I actually don't even remember the accident happening. When I was driving one second and then the next second I was facing the woods. Had a black Jeep Wrangler at the time that I was super proud of, very, very happy to have that vehicle. And I was facing the woods and next thing I know, I'm kind of out of it. And I look up and the, the top of the Jeep is sheared off. And I'm looking at the sky and it's, you know, March seventh, I believe. So it's not especially warm out. I'm just like, what's going on? I'm like very out of it. And then I look and I see my arm hanging out the window, really, really bad shape. My, my arm was broken in three different spots, complete mess. My legs were kind of pushed up around my chest. There's kind of blood everywhere. My airbag was out. Sorry to get so graphic, but I realized I was in a bad car accident. I thought that I had fallen asleep at the wheel and hit something. And anyways, but, but I was upright. I was just facing the woods and I was in a lot of pain. Next thing I know, people are running up to me. Got a woman grabbing my arm, holding it for me, people checking to see that I'm okay. I was conscious, but it's kind of trapped in my vehicle for a while. And in a lot of pain in general. Next thing I know, bag over my head, canvas bag, just to prevent glass, stuff hitting me in the face as they're trying to get me out. Eventually got me out, airlifted me to Maine Medical Center in Portland. Meanwhile, my parents got that phone call that every parent dreads and they're heading down to, to York, which is where this happened. They thought I was going to York Hospital or they, they were told that I was going to York Hospital. So ultimately thought, okay, go to York Hospital. That can't be that serious. But while they're on their way over there, they get the call that I'm actually in helicopter being flown to Portland to Maine Medical. So at that point, they knew things were pretty serious. Eventually landed the jet port, ambulance ride to Portland. I get there, I see my parents, I'm able to talk to them, although I'm very much out of it. And the thing I remember is I had a lot of pain in my body. Something was not right inside of like my chest cavity, my stomach area. I remember talking to them before going into the operating room, had a bunch of, I guess, maybe fifteen, twenty people that were in the hallway, not too far away there to check on me and be supportive, which I appreciate. But I remember talking to them saying, I'm going to the surgery and I don't know if I'll come out of it. Don't even know what the problem is. So you know, that was a weird situation, something I'll never forget. Went in for surgery and then next thing I know, it's the next morning, woke up with tubes in me, but they had some internal bleeding. We were able to stop that. And I was left with a, a big scar in my, my abdomen. And I think I broke my leg, broke my foot, arm in a few places. Ended up spending, I think it was two or three weeks in the hospital. And then a few months in a wheelchair before I could walk again. And like I said, it ended up being one of the biggest moments of my life, kind of changed my whole path beyond that. But it was a really cool opportunity to see my family come together to support me. People from the community came around. I had, you know, a rant built in my house. I had friends, parents bringing stuff for me. I even had Bob Marley, who happened to be in the hospital. A lot of you guys might know Bob. I think it was his father was in the hospital at the same time and we had known him through some family connections and he brought like a dozen of his comedy CDs over, which I still have to this day. So people really rallied around me, supported me. Ultimately went home for a few months, but like I was saying, this is second half of senior year of college. It's like, what's going to happen? Am I going to be able to graduate? Am I going to have to go back? Did not want to go back to college in the fall, I should say. So I worked with my advisors to do everything that I could to still graduate on time. Credit to my teachers, credit to people at St. A's. They came up, they worked with me. My dad eventually would bring me to St. A's on Tuesdays and Thursdays. My friends would push me around in wheelchair. And I somehow managed to return to school, I think with two or three weeks left till graduation and ultimately walk very slowly across that stage to get my diploma and graduate. So big moment for me, but the thing that that affected is what I did after college, right? I was coming back from spring break. I thought, you know what? I have all these interviews lined up. I'm going to go work in Boston. I'm going to work in New York. I'm going to just be away. Never thought of myself as a long-term Bedford person, long-term Southern Maine person. You know, it's time to go away and, and live life and enjoy. But because of the accident, because of the condition of my body, I wasn't able to do anything. I missed all those job interviews. I didn't know what the future held for me. Had about, I think, nine more months of rehab. I couldn't even use my left arm for about that time. I had a lot of nerve damage, couldn't, couldn't move my, couldn't move my hands or anything like that. It all eventually came back, but it took a while. So I had to stay close to home while I sorted that out and figure out what I was going to do after college. So at the time the accident happened, I was interning at a financial firm in Bedford, New Hampshire. And realized that I could get licensed to give financial advice while I was doing my rehab. There's a series of tests that people have to take to be able to do that. I think it's series seven sixty-six and then a life insurance test they had to take. I mean, this is twenty years ago. But I did all that stuff because I could do it while I was rehabbing. And when things were back to normal, I think maybe fall, October, I started that financial advice position and did that for a few years. But what that meant was I had to move to Portsmouth. And my wife Tara, who was my girlfriend at the time, she had a job in Portsmouth too. So we moved there for a couple of years. And it was a great couple of years, you know, being in our early twenties, living in Portsmouth, Portsmouth then isn't what Portsmouth is now. It's come quite a ways since then, but it was still a great time. Friends used to come up every weekend, walk out to the bars, have an awesome time. If you're listening to this and haven't spent much time in Portsmouth, I definitely check it out. It's grown so much. A lot of great restaurants, bars, food, it's worth checking out. But it got to the point that Tara and I were getting married and like, okay, we want to buy a house. And at the time Portsmouth was very expensive, which is kind of laughable compared to what it probably is now. And we had a decision to make. What are we going to do? We're going to stay in Portsmouth or are we going to move someplace else? We had an opportunity to build a new home in Bedford where we're both from. And we took that opportunity. And we built that home back in, in two thousand, I think it was six, the same year that we ultimately got married and decided to move home. And we, you know, we're going to be closer family and closer to friends that were from that area and for, for a while. And still, I mean, we're, we're very happy with the way it all worked out. But life kind of just goes on in our early twenties. And you know, starting our careers or furthering our careers. And it eventually got to the point for me where I wasn't enjoying the job that I was doing anymore. The financial advice firm that I worked for, I didn't feel at the time was in the business of actually providing financial advice. It was more about making quick sales and all that. And it just wasn't for me at that point. So I partnered up with a gentleman in Alorchard and was able to transfer all my clients to him. And then I just left, not even knowing what I was going to do next. So quit that job and for the first time in a while, I just had no plan on what I was going to do, but it didn't take long, about a week, maybe a couple of weeks of not having a job. My cousin, I think, reached out to me. Her name's Michelle Celia. Shout out to Michelle. She reached out to me because she was working at a title company called Market Street Settlement Group. Didn't know anything about what a title company was back then. They were looking for marketers. They were looking for people to work with realtors, loan officers, to bring business into the door, to close out transactions. And I'm like, you know what? Let's do that. And I really enjoyed my time working at Market Street Settlement Group. It was a couple of years of grinding, you know, just working hard to build relationships with realtors and loan officers. And honestly, it's what started me down the path that I am now. I, I wouldn't be here where I am now if it wasn't for the time that I spent at Market Street. But there was one time that I always tell people, I knew that it was probably time for me to move on from Market Street was a time that I was sitting at a closing, doing a closing for some realtors, I kind of monk beach realty. And I handed each realtor a forty-five thousand dollar commission check each. And I was like, what am I doing? Why? Am I, you know, on this side of the table, doing these closings, grinding out, getting these referrals, you know, just to hand over forty-five thousand dollar commission checks. So at that point I knew that I'm like, all right, well, I'm working hard in this business. Maybe I can move on to the real estate side of things or the lending side of things. And I had a lot of good relationships on both sides. But my neighbor and good friend at the time, Chris Bedard, had his own mortgage company and he was sending me business and we were good friends. And he said, why don't I come work for him for a little bit and see what that's like? So I did that. Started working at Assured Mortgage Solutions for a couple of years. And it was back in two thousand eight, when things were going really sideways with the economy, right? The Great Recession. You know, bad time, people say to start in the mortgage business, a hundred percent commission job, don't know when your next paycheck's coming. You don't know when your next deal's coming from. And I'd say it's kind of funny, but I just took that leap of faith and said, you know, I'm going to do this. And again, people say that's probably the worst time to start. But I would say it was the best time to start because in that period of time when things were slow and the industry was changing, I was able to establish relationships, work hard, build good habits, put things in place so that when things came out of that recession, two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve and beyond, I was in a position to take advantage of that. And I guess maybe it's dumb luck, but I do feel like I was in a position to take advantage of that and, and was able to take advantage of it right up until about a year ago. And now we're back in this same spot where there's a lot of uncertainty. And I'll get back to this stuff in a bit, but there's a lot of uncertainty now. And so if anyone came to me and was like, should I start in the mortgage business or real estate now? As much as people are getting out of those industries, I would say, you know, if you can weather the storm in terms of not earning a paycheck, at least on a regular basis, and you can build some habits and you can grind and you can learn, yeah, do it. Because a year or two from now, when things turn back around, you'll be that person that is ready to take advantage of that as opposed to waiting to start then and having to ramp up. So anyways, starting in two thousand eight and big, big credit to Chris for bringing me on, honestly changed my life. Um, because I wouldn't again, be where I am at now if it wasn't for him and have been doing lending ever since. So I think coming up on fifteen years later this summer. So did that for a few years, ultimately moved on from working with Chris. Went to go work for another local company. That was a tough thing for, for Chris and I, honestly, we were neighbors and those few years away were difficult on our friendship and our relationship. But you know, a few years later, we ended up reconnecting, opening up Norcom Mortgage in Saco with our other partner, Brian, which I will get to. But it's funny how it all came around. And again, I owe Chris a ton of credit for, for where I'm at in my career right now. But it all started with him back at Assured Mortgage Solutions back in two thousand eight. So once I kind of got settled in the mortgage business, my wife and I started a family. I think it was around thirty that my first daughter was born, Arbery. And I have two more daughters, Ellie and Nora that are eight and five and Arbery's eleven. So three girls. Parenting is insane. I should probably do a parenting podcast, but I am very proud of my three little girls. They have a lot of things about them that are like me, that are like my wife. Yeah, they're caring, loving, they're competitive, they're smart. But at the same time, they're little girls, they fight, they get on each other's nerves, they pull hair, they steal each other's stuff. But um, I guess that's what having kids is all about. It's parenting's all about. It's been a wild ride for the past eleven years since we've had kids, but it's, it's gone by in a blink of an eye and I wouldn't really change a thing. So parallel to being in the mortgage business, had these three kids. And trying to do everything that we can to build a future for them, but at the same time, try and enjoy those moments along the way. So I think we do a good job balancing it. We're always trying to do better, just like any parent. But it's been an amazing experience so far. So while that is all going on and having a family, like I was saying, I started Norcom Mortgage Saco with Chris and Brian. That was seven years ago, back in two thousand fifteen. I left the place I was working at. Chris still had Assured Mortgage Solutions. Brian was at Kennebunk Savings Bank. And on the recommendation of a good friend of ours, Matt Veer, at least me and Chris, he suggested that we meet up to talk about working together again. And that lit this spark and kind of led us to where we are now. It was about a year in the making of opening up Norcom Mortgage Saco while we were working at our other places, but we've been together now for, it'll be eight years in July first, and it's been amazing eight years, really has. Those are two of my closest friends. I have a ton of respect for them. The job they do for their clients, the way they work, the way they operate with their families. They're just awesome guys to be associated with. I feel very fortunate to be, you know, be working with them. So as long as I am in this mortgage industry, I expect to be working with those guys. So we've had a, quite a run in the past seven and a half years. And the market has certainly changed. And that's something that we're, I guess we're all dealing with, but I guess it could be worse. So we've been doing that for seven and a half years in December of twenty, twenty twenty-one, we decided to buy a building together, really kind of solidify our relationship together. We bought the building that we operate in now. For the people that are from the area may be familiar with Sea Cafe in Saco that is building that we own. Sea is a tenant of ours. We operate on the second floor of that. So very excited about that. But now it's probably a good time to talk a little bit about how the business has changed since we've um, since we've been working together. So things got very busy in twenty twenty-one, first half of twenty twenty-two with COVID, interest rates coming low. If you're listening to this, you generally have an idea that rates had been very good in that period of time. A lot of people purchased, a lot of people refinanced. And fast forward to the second half of last year, that's when things started to change a little bit. Rates started to go up very fast, you know, rates. Generally, when they go down, they move down over a period of time, but when they increase, it's almost like they increase overnight. So it was like one second they were at three percent and then the next thing you know, they're at seven percent. That happened over a, a shorter period of time and it really spooked the market. When you combine interest rates rising with the fact that people all purchase or refinance and are sitting in homes that have low interest rate mortgages, why would they sell to turn around and go buy something with a double interest rate? Increase their payment for no reason. And it's really perpetuated this low inventory issue that we have. So needless to say, the market's changed a lot in the past few years. Things are a lot slower and it's going to take some time before that sorts itself out. And I think that we're well positioned to weather that storm and we're still having closings. We're still working with people, getting them in the right shape to buy, but people aren't able to put homes under contract as easily as they could have in the past couple of years. So as far as Norcom Mortgage goes, anyone that talks to me at Norcom, I'm, I'm a huge fan and promoter of. They've been fantastic to work with. We work with some amazing people. Phil, the president of the company is like family to us. We have some other people spread throughout the whole company that are just like longtime best friends, people that we work great with, that do a great job at their role in the company and support us one hundred percent. So I can't imagine doing mortgages anywhere else. There are also a million loan officers, a million mortgage companies out there, but I think we do a pretty good job, right? You know, we wouldn't be where we are today if we didn't do a good job in terms of taking good care of our customers, making sure we close on time, offering low interest rates, smooth experiences, supporting our realtors, people that refer business to us. So I think we are particularly good at what we do. And I expect that to continue moving forward in the future. So very positive about Norcom, very positive about the mortgage industry in general, just kind of working through some of the kinks in twenty twenty-three and hopefully in time, things smooth out. I expect that I'll be doing mortgages another five, 10 years. I don't know. I don't know that I can do it forever. It's a fairly stressful job. But it is something that is a big part of me at this point. And I just love helping people buy homes. So I, I would expect to do it till Nora's out of high school, maybe. And then who knows what happens there. And I think Brian and Chris are all on the same page. So outside of mortgages, what are some of the things that I have going on? You've heard me mention on the podcast, BNI before. BNI is a networking group that works out of Saco, generally people from the Bedford-Saco area, but there's people outside of that, Portland, Scarborough, Kennebunk, you know, Gorham, wherever, just in the general Southern Maine area, Northern New York County, Southern Cumberland County. And it's a networking group that is focused on promoting our businesses, passing referrals. Givers gain is something that you hear me talk a lot about on the podcast or in general, it's the idea of if you help people get what they want, you'll get what you want in turn. But it starts with the focusing on other people first. And it's something that has always been a part of me, I believe, but it wasn't until I started my relationship with BNI that I was able to verbalize it and realize the big impact that it had in my life. So there's about four hundred members of BNI in Maine, I think twenty different chapters. And this is a nationwide, worldwide entity. Again, focus on referring business, growing each other's business, promoting business. Not only do we do that, but it's also an educational networker. They teach you how to network. They teach you how to operate your business. At the time that I wanted to be a part of a BNI, there was none that had seats for people in my profession and mortgage professionals, real estate professionals scoop up those seats very fast when they become available. So what I decided to do was to start a chapter with a friend of mine, Adam, because there was no way we were going to get into another one. So we said, hey, let's start one. There isn't one in the Bedford-Saco area anyways. Let's do this. And very proud of the job that we did to start a chapter seven years ago, build it up to the point that I think we have twenty-three people in it and we've probably have had maybe eighty-five people in it right now. So I'm the president of this chapter and it's something that I take very serious because not only am I getting business from it, but I'm able to refer business, have solid professionals that I know if any of my clients need anything that they offer, I can refer them with confidence that they'll take good care of them, can have an impact on my local community in terms of helping promote businesses and just make lifelong friendships. People that regardless of the business that we do together, I know that I can count on them at any point. So spend a good amount of time on that on a weekly basis. It's something that I think as long as I'm in business, I will have a role in BNI, especially as long as it stays in the Bedford-Saco area. So BNI is a big thing for me. Other thing is Bedford School Committee. I have been on the school committee for man, the past few years has been a blur, but it was, I think the fall before COVID, so maybe fall of twenty nineteen, I was elected. And I've been on the school committee ever since, going to be coming up on four years now. And it's funny how it all happened. I never thought of myself as someone that would be on the school committee. My kids go to St. James, a private school in Bedford. That's where I went to school. We were always going to send my kids there, just given our history. My wife went there as well. So I'm sure people are like, well, Randy's on the Bedford School Committee for public schools and his kids go to St. James. Why is that? And honestly, that's just, that was a decision that we made before we even decided to, or before I even decided to be on the school committee. But it is important to me to support my community. One of the things being in the mortgage industry is you deal with people all the time that are looking to buy homes locally. And being from Bedford, one of the things that always bothered me was when I'd say, hey, where do you want to live? And they would say, I want to live in Saco, Dayton, Arundel, Kennebunk, Scarborough, basically everything in and around Bedford, but they wouldn't say Bedford. And I was always like, well, what's, why, why not? And they would say it was the schools. So I reached out to Jeremy, who has been on this podcast before. He will be on it again soon. He's the superintendent of Bedford Schools. And I'm like, what's going on with Bedford Schools? Why people keep saying they don't want to live in Bedford because of the schools? And you know, we had a long conversation about it and he gave me some feedback and end of the day, I don't know if it's actually the schools that people want to keep their kids out of. I think it has a little bit more to do with maybe the poverty that's in Bedford, although that seems to be changing. People don't want their kids to be in the same school with. I, I don't, I don't know, some, something along those lines, but it created this dialogue with Jeremy, who I've gone to know pretty well since then. He said, you know what? We have a vacancy on the school committee. Why don't you consider joining? And that's what happened. I ultimately filled that spot and ran for reelection and was elected. And one of the things that I can't stand is people complaining, but not really being willing to do anything about it. So I'm more about being a part of the solution as opposed to being part of the problem. So when I presented this problem to him and he gave me what I looked at as a solution, I said, you know what? I will join the school committee. I'm going to learn about what issues people may have with Bedford Schools. I'm going to do what I can to support my community. And honestly, I wish that more people would do that. If anything, if I've learned anything in the past couple of years is that there's a ton of people that complain, they have their opinions, but end of the day, if they have to do anything to try to solve that problem, they're not going to do anything at all. So I do not want to be that person in life, whether it's with work, with cities, stuff like that, with my family. If there's a problem, I want to work to fix it as opposed to just be one of those people that complains about it. So anyways, I've been part of the school committee for four years. And it's been a hell of a four years, right? Like who would have anticipated what would happen with COVID in that period of time. Um, but we made the decisions we made. They were not easy decisions. There's a lot of considerations that go into determining how many days per week a school stays open or whether or not kids have masks and when the masks come off. And again, not easy decisions across the board, but we made the decisions that we did. And I'm ultimately proud of those. And I think that Bedford School Systems was a leader for Southern Maine, if not the whole state of Maine, and the way we handled things. And now we have returned to more normal times and where biggest issues are budgets and state subsidies and all that sort of stuff, which we'll discuss on a podcast coming up soon. But it's nice to feel like I'm learning stuff, contributing to the community. And I want Bedford to get to the point where when I ask families where they want to buy, they throw Bedford in the mix with Kennebunks and Sacos. I think we're getting there. Bedford has improved a ton over the past few years. A lot of development. There's a lot of energy downtown. Very proud of what's going on. And I really look forward to what's going to happen in the years to come. So beyond that, I've obviously started this podcast. This is something that been spending a decent amount of time on after forty-five, forty-six episodes. Told myself that I would get to a year's worth. Haven't missed one since I started. We're creeping up on that fifty-second episode. Getting to the point where I'm going to have to decide what I do, if I'm gonna keep doing this or I'm not. But honestly, regardless of how many people listen, I have fun having these conversations with people that I'm having with them, people that I've known my whole life and I'm getting to have different conversations than I've ever had before. People I haven't talked to in ten years that I reconnect with and have them on the podcast and learn about their business. There's people I've never even spoken to that I've had on the podcast that I've gotten a chance to meet now. I mean, honestly, I even have people reaching out to me, asking me if I need guests. So this isn't going to be a long-term career for me. I don't think I'm that great at it, but it is doing something for me. It's helping build a brand. It's helping promote people. It's building this little community. So I do spend a decent amount of time on the podcast in terms of recording on a weekly basis, editing, promoting on social media. So if you are somehow listening to this after almost thirty minutes, I appreciate you grinding through the podcast with me, supporting the podcast. I always tell people if you can subscribe, even if you're not going to listen to every episode, subscribe. So it shows up on your feed, whether it's Spotify, Apple or YouTube. You'll see it in there on a weekly basis. And if something catches your eye, if there's a, someone I'm having a conversation with that you're interested in learning a lot more about, you can just click listen that week. And if it's not, just move on to the next one. So I do appreciate that support. Honestly, if we want to get crazy, if you guys can rate the podcast on Apple or Spotify too, give it a little five stars or write a review, I think on Apple. I think that that would go a long way too, but that's the plan for, for me moving forward. It's all about balancing doing mortgages, doing school committee, doing the podcast, all on a professional side, but at the same time, being a husband and a father and trying to enjoy life as much as we can. You know, nothing's guaranteed. Had someone I knew in my life pass away at forty-four years old, about a month ago, and it just struck me as, you know, I'm getting into my forties and nothing's, nothing's guaranteed. So trying to find a balance between doing all those things, but enjoying time with my wife, enjoying time with my kids, traveling, skiing, spending time outside. That's what I'm all about. So hopefully if you've listened to this much, that you got something out of it, learned a little bit more about me. Please do me a favor, share the podcast. Honestly, text it to someone, email it to someone, do a Facebook post, do whatever, help me spread the word. Want to see how many people I can get to listen to the Randy Force Your Podcast. So thank you all for your support. Appreciate it. Thanks for listening. Take care.